Brooke, are we getting close?
We're live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the University City Council to order at six thirty P. M. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clay.
Present.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hales.
Here.
Councilmember Smotherson.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here. Thank you very much. By the way, to everyone at attendance, we appreciate Linda Schaefer subbing in for our city clerk, being our acting city clerk this evening, as our city clerk is at the State City Clerks Meeting in Columbia, Missouri. So Linda, thank you once again for stepping in. You have before you the agenda, and I understand we have a couple of changes. Mr. Rose.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'd ask or recommend changing the agenda to move item K three to the city manager's report and to table item L two.
Any other changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to make the changes as requested by the city manager? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has now been amended. Is there now an approval of the agenda? Am I correct? I did the amendment, now I gotta do the approval. Made by Mr. Smotherson, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no proclamations this evening. We have no minutes to approve this evening. Ms. Klein. Could we microphone, please? Thank you.
Um, I would like to reappoint Teresa Huther to the senior commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe. I'd like to nominate for reappointment to the library board, Joan Greco Cohen.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Klein. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay.
Went so well, I think I'll do it again. Like to renominate Helen Nelling for reappointment to the library board.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Smotherson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate to the senior commission, Christopher Lotak.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Klein. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The record should reflect that Patrick Fox was sworn into the park commission on March sixth in the city clerk's office. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak at this time on non-agenda items? Thank you very much. That concludes citizen participation for this section of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the is a public hearing for liquor license for QuickTrip number six twenty at seventy-five seventy-nine Olive Boulevard. This hearing is opened at six thirty-five P. M. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on that particular agenda item?
No.
And Madam Clerk, do we receive any written comments prior to today's meeting for this item?
No, we did not.
Having no public comments, the public hearing is closed at six thirty-five P. M. You now you now have before you the consent agenda with items one, two, four, and five. Is there a motion to approve? Mode by Miss motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Rose.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this item, item uh, L one asks that you receive a presentation from a representative from Bi-State uh, Development Agency uh, to discuss the MetroLink security efforts. I believe we have Kevin Scott from Bi-State here tonight.
And just for ease of purpose, when you get to the microphone, if you'd hit the bottom button, your microphone come on and we can then hear you. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Board. Um, which? Okay, great. My name is Kevin Scott, and I am the Director of Security for Bi-State Development. I joined the company in September of two thousand and nineteen. And we, uh, I'm here tonight to um, make you aware of a significant upgrade to the MetroLink system that Bi-State Development has endeavored and where we are with that project. So if you'll indulge me just for a couple of minutes, I will move through this uh, very quickly. Very, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you very much. So I wanted to just provide a little bit of history uh, on this slide, just so that you're aware. In two thousand and eighteen, Bi-State Development in conjunction with East West Gateway Council, governments and regional stakeholders uh, retained the services of WSP USA for what was initiated as a security uh, survey or study for MetroLink. As most of you know, MetroLink is a third of the Metro Transit operation. It's forty-six miles of light rail. And during this uh, study, they focused on six primary areas uh, of review from personnel to technology to fare enforcement to crime prevention through environmental design, uh, infrastructure changes. And during this process, uh, they quickly realized that their focus needed to turn from the MetroLink to the totality of the public safety structure at Metro Transit. So as a result of phase one of this review, they made ninety-nine recommendations for improvement uh, in those six major categories. I have these reports and would be willing to uh, share those with you. If you'd like to receive those, uh, please reach out and we will send those to you. Those ninety-nine recommendations affected the broader security footprint for the transportation system, not just MetroLink. So this is the study that brought me uh, to to Bi-State in two thousand and nineteen. And we have been working to implement those recommendations since then. So we um, have made a significant number of improvements from our law enforcement contracts to our security contracts, to how we use security on the system, both buses and rail, how we influx new technology and have technology complement our overall security structure. So if you'd like to learn more about that study, please reach out. We're more than happy to uh, walk you through that. But we're here tonight to talk about uh, secure platform plan. So as you're aware, this goes back and pretty much predominantly refocuses on the MetroLink system. We have forty-six miles of light rail alignment on MetroLink, thirty-eight existing platforms that span from Shrewsbury and Lambert uh, to Forest Park and then Mary, and then travel east to Fairview Heights and Shadow Scott. All right. For those of you who are familiar with MetroLink, it is an open concept system. You can walk up to a fare or a TVM ticket vending machine, buy your fare, validate your fare, and walk onto the platforms unabated. All right. Most of the fare checking thus far historically on the system has been done once people are on the trains with fare enforcers. The other thing that we face is our platforms, from a security standpoint, have been deemed vulnerable to activity within the uh, the region. And there are a lot of incidents that occur or initiate off of property that traverse under our property and become a Metro Transit issue. Um, there is a an effort to make these platforms, all thirty-eight platforms, the existing platforms, and the thirty-ninth platform that will soon be constructed at Mid-America Airport in the SCUDA uh, secure with fare gating systems and security fencing. This project will also incorporate the uh, complete revamping of a new fare collection system for MetroLink and actually Metrobus as well, so that uh, new modern equipment greatly reduce the number of fare media, possible fare media. Right now, there's sixty-two versions of a ticket. And they keep creating tickets over and over again based on um, special events or special circumstances. Uh, the fare collection system is in much need of reconfiguration and and upgrading. And so that will be uh, a corresponding project with the gating, the fencing, and closed circuit television upgrades that we're making as well. So we're moving forward uh, with the gating of those platforms. Uh, we have uh, selected an engineer, a design engineering firm, HNTB. They are a local footprint here in St. Louis. They're based in Kansas City and have offices all over the all over the United States. They are a transportation-focused organization, uh, and they are helping to uh, re-concept each of the platforms. The platforms themselves will not be excavated or reconstructed, so we're taking the existing footprints. And we're we're uh, retrofitting the gating system and the new fencing fencing system uh, into those existing environments themselves. Next slide, please. Actually, I got this. Yeah. So a little bit about the financing of this project. Um, our cost estimate initially was around fifty-two million dollars. Twelve million of that comes from bond refinancing proceeds dedicated to security on the transportation system. Uh, twelve million from Illinois allocation. This is federal stimulus money. Seventeen point two five million is Bi-State Development Capital and American Recovery Plan funding. And ten point seven five million is coming from private sector St. Louis. So we're working through the final stages of our fiscal budget. Uh, a lot of these funding uh, sources are included in our in our fiscal budget, and we're hopefully going to solidify that uh, very quickly. Uh, this project has received resounding support from all three of our major funding uh, governmental sources, St. Louis County, the city of St. Louis, and St. Clair County, Illinois. All three elected elected uh, executives have endorsed moving forward with taking an open concept uh, light rail system to a closed and secured system as we move uh, this plan forward. So are there any questions about uh, secured platforms? The gating system itself has been selected. Uh, there will be a rotogate and swing gate type combination system.
Mr. Smotherson.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. Um, I'm I do apologize. I didn't get your name. And and that's my question, is your name and contact information? Because I'd like to get a copy of that presentation if if that's if that's okay.
Absolutely. My name is Kevin Scott. K E V I N S C O T T. And the best point of contact for me is work cell phone is three one four three zero three zero nine zero three.
Zero nine.
Zero three.
Zero three.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. And um, last question is, you showed a picture of the uh, Central West End.
Yes.
Is that just an illustration or or is that a starting point? And if you could, if you could explain where you guys will be starting?
Sure.
If that has been decided or not.
Sure. So the the Central West End photograph is something that we put in place about six or seven months ago, just to show a concept.
Sure.
Uh, so we're not actually starting with the Central West End. Uh, again, what's important to note is the integration of a new fare collection system to make all this work. So you have two corresponding projects. One project's going to move faster than the other. So the fare collection system, when we uh, broach into construction of what we're calling phase one or a pilot of this program, uh, we won't have fare collection integration. So what we have done is we have divided the totality of this project into seven phases, actually six phases. Uh, phase one will be a pilot. And these locations were chosen because of uh, uh, the the lack of need to completely re-concept those locations or those platforms. We will also have to staff these gates once they're in, because we don't have fare integration. And so we will have to allocate uh, human resources to staff them until we're able to to uh, connect the fare collection system. So phase one, the pilot will roll out. It will be at Emerson Park, Jackie Joyner-Kersey Center, Washington Park, and College. College is Southwestern Illinois College, Belleville. Okay? Uh, phase two uh, will be uh, from Delmar to the Civic Center. So Delmar, um, Forest Park, Central West End, Cortex, Grand, Union Station, and the Civic Center. Now, what we're doing by setting up a phasal approach to implementation of the system is shaving time off the end of the project. If we treated this project in totality and we waited for all design to be done for all thirty-eight platforms, um, bid construction uh, in totality of all of the all of these locations, we probably would not realize a gating system until late two thousand twenty-six, early two thousand and twenty-seven. So we are going to phase this. So phase one that I just mentioned to you, well, actually, we will bid that for construction in August of this year. When phase one uh, goes for bid for construction, phase two will enter final design phase, which is about eighty days. So we're trying to create a cascading effect for this project. So um, we may, depending on how the designs go, if we design quicker than we anticipate, we may combine some of these packages and bid construction together. Uh, but our plan right now is to bid construction separately in each of the packages, all while uh, hoping to create a market where uh, multiple construction firms can participate. If we treated this project as one major project, it's pretty cumbersome, and you would probably limit the number of construction organizations that would be willing to bid on it. So that's the plan uh, moving there.
Okay. And uh, just one more thing, and that is uh, I use MetroLink a lot, but I will say this, my wife rides MetroLink every day, and she can't wait for these new uh, phases to come in. So I just wanted to let you know and say that.
I appreciate that very much. Uh, the last thing I'd like to leave you with, you know, fast forward here real quick to the last slide. Uh, in conjunction with the assessments um, that we've done. That's good. Uh, there you go. Thank you. Um, the ninety-nine recommendations that were put in place. Uh, the SPP project, uh, by the way, is not one of those ninety-nine recommendations. That is above and beyond the changes that Bi-State is making. Uh, we've also uh, entered into an agreement with Chestnut Health Systems. Uh, on the they are based in Illinois, but we now have placed teams of clinicians on MetroLink and Metrobus. Uh, two team or two persons, four teams, two two persons on each team. One is a clinical level uh, a clinician, and one is a peer recovery specialist, and they are working our system in concert with our security and law enforcement personnel. Obviously, there are a lot of things that we deal with on the public transportation system, or a lot of individuals that are in need of services that I cannot provide from a security or policing standpoint. And so this organization has brought a number of different organizations in the region to the table to try to continue that support. So there are a lot of good things going on at Bi-State, and I look forward to uh, any further conversations you'd like to have. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Clay?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Crowe. Um, so you mentioned uh, that, and sir, thank you for your uh, for your presentation. Um, a couple of quick things. The height of the gate, my my eyes are not what they what they once were, seem to be taller than a person, correct? So we're not talking about a turnstile model.
Yeah, let me go back uh, to the first slide. So you're exactly correct. If we put in a system and we do not maximize breaching or mitigate breaching, it's a failed project.
Right.
So what you see is, uh, and again, this is an early rendition, but a rotogate system, which will be the primary ingress and egress accompanied by a swing door. So for every rotogate we have, we have to have a swing door for ADA compliance for uh, major ingress and egress. So that's how that will work. Over all the gating systems, a canopy will be built, and any space between the top of the gating systems and the canopy will be secured, so you can't climb over the the turnstiles. The fencing uh, right now, the scope of work calls for a minimum of five-foot fencing, but it will probably end up being six foot.
Okay.
As we move.
And 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 thank you for that. And the final question, it relates to timeline. I think the station, the folks in this room and those perhaps watching would be most interested in is the Delmar station. So do you have a sense of when that might be a minimum started, ideally completed?
Yeah, so so Delmar is included in phase two, which is the first full phase, actually, of the seven platforms. The first first phase is just a pilot. So phase two is uh, seven platforms. Delmar is included in that, and we will bid for construction in December of this year.
In December of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is there an anticipated completion?
Uh, would anticipate that we're looking at about a sixty-day procurement process. Uh, once we put a contractor in place, get the contract signed, we're looking at a probably a construction time of around four months.
Okay, so maybe mid-summer.
I would say second quarter of
Okay.
Twenty-four.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hales.
Thank you. Um, along the same lines, uh, the other two stations that a lot of our residents use are Big Bend and Forsyth. And where might that fall from a timing perspective?
Yeah, so uh, we've only made recommendations for the first two phases, and these are security recommendations uh, that the engineers asked us to make primarily because we feel like those first two phases, we're actually going to have to staff those fare collection system. Um, how the rest of the phases play out will be more of an engineering decision based on uh, some of the um, issues that we have that we'll have to maneuver through in the engineering perspective, especially the below grade or underground type station. So uh, our hope is that we move through this progress or this project as quickly as we can, but I don't really have definitive answers for you beyond phase two.
Yes. If nothing, any other questions to Mr. Scott? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your time and presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good luck. Mr. Rose.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this next item up under the city manager's report, the new item L two asks that you consider a conveying of a remnant parcel uh, that is abutting eighty-one oh one Stanford to the owners of eighty-one oh one Stanford. Uh, the owners have maintained this parcel for uh, a decade or more, and there is no public use uh, for the property, so I'm recommending its conveyance.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Clay. Is there a discussion? Mr. McMahon.
I'm I'm abstaining. I have a conflict on this one, so I'll not participate.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that Councilmember McMahon will be abstaining. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move forward to, I believe, bill number ninety-five oh three, which I believe needs a little further uh, amending, so I'm going to ask Mr. Mulligan to provide us with the language as necessary for an amendment to bill number ninety-five oh three.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I recommend uh, if the council is so inclined, to move uh, to amend bill number ninety-five oh three to include the changes to exhibits A and E shown in red line in the city council's packet for this meeting and new exhibit E appendices A, B, C, and E on file in the city clerk's office as of today.
Is there a motion to bring forth the amendment suggested by Mr. Mulligan? Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Ms. Klein. Is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the amendment, the amendment can be made by voice vote. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. May we now have the second reading, Madam Clerk, of bill number ninety-five zero three as amended?
Bill nine five oh three, in ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment and special district revenue bonds in connection with the Olive Boulevard Commercial Corridor and Residential Conservation Redevelopment Plan, pledging and assigning certain revenues for the purpose of paying the principal of an interest on the bonds and authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection therewith.
Thank you very much. May we have the third reading of bill number ninety-five oh three as amended?
Bill nine five oh three, in ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment and special district revenue bonds in connection with the Olive Boulevard Commercial Corridor and Residential Conservation Redevelopment Plan, pledging and assigning certain revenues for the purpose of paying the principal of an interest on the bonds and authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection therewith.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Smotherson. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clay. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Smotherson.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye. The bill has passed. Uh, now we have bill number ninety-five oh four. Mr. Mulligan.
Uh, no, no, Mayor, my uh, other uh, motion, recommended motion dealt with item uh, K four. Whenever you would uh, like me to take that up on that that was on the consent agenda and it was passed. There was there was a a typographical error regarding uh, the month of the closing that I'd like to just correct for the record, if that's all right.
Do you want to do it now? You want to do it later?
Whatever your pleasure is.
How about we finish the bills, then we'll come back in just a second. Let's go with bill number nine nine five oh four as amended. Uh, Madam Clerk, may we have the second reading?
Bill nine five oh four, in ordinance approving a second amendment to redevelopment agreement and an amended and restated district project agreement in connection with the Olive Boulevard Commercial Corridor and Residential Conservation Redevelopment Plan.
May we have the third reading of ninety-five oh four as amended?
Bill ninety-five oh four, in ordinance approving a second amendment to redevelopment agreement and an amended and restated district project agreement in connection with the Olive Boulevard Commercial Corridor and Residential Conservation Redevelopment Plan.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Clay. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Smotherson. Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye. The bill has passed. Let's go back and do some housekeeping on item number K four. Mr. Mulligan, an amendment is necessary?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, thank you. I just noticed that there is a typographical error in the closing and possession date of the residential sale contract. Uh, the date is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Obviously, that's passed and can't occur. The correct date is December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. So if uh, the council is so inclined, I recommend that there be a motion to amend section five of the residential sale contract to change the closing date to honor before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion made for item number K four in light of Mr. Mulligan's comments? Motion made by Mr. Clay, seconded by Ms. Klein. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. New business. Bill number ninety-five ten. Who would like to introduce? Councilmember Smotherson. Madam Clerk, may we have the Who would like to introduce? Councilmember Smotherson. Madam Clerk, may we have the first reading?
Bill ninety five ten, in ordinance approving a final development plan for lot five of Market at Olive Platt three.
Thank you very much. Now, as we move forward to council reports and business, other than the Ward two council seat vacancy, are there other items or other comments that members of council would like to make during this section of the agenda? Hearing now, just as I I'm looking around the audience and I I recognize that we have, I think most of the folks, I see Mr. Tears, I see Mr. Pelker, I see Mr. Fuller. Is Mr. Johnson here as well? Okay, Mr. Johnson is not. Okay, thank you very much. We have before us now the Ward two council seat vacancy. Is there any comments, discussion, or actions that members of the council would like to take at this time? Ms. Klein.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to nominate Dennis Fuller to replace Tim Cusick for second ward council member.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clay. Is there discussion or comments? We have members of council. Ms. Klein.
Yeah, I I wanted to take a few minutes to, first of all, to give tribute to my former colleague and second ward council member, Tim Cusick, who we are replacing his seat tonight. He really was a wonderful colleague and demonstrated, you know, that he was capable and that he was dedicated and that he always showed kindness and respect to the people that he that he interacted with. And he will be missed. That being said, last week, Councilmember McMahon alluded to our responsibility to find someone to fill his shoes. And part of that part of that process, I think, is explaining why I think that Dennis Fuller will best fill the shoes of Mr. Cusick, of Councilmember Cusick. And I just kind of briefly want to say a few comments about the other applicants who applied. I really appreciate the time and effort that you put into applying. It shows that you have an interest and a care for our city and and I know that all of this process wasn't always easy. And I appreciate that that time and effort that you put in. I think that Mr. Polco, you will that will make a great council member someday. I think that that maybe some more city service will be beneficial in helping to understand all the processes and and make connections that will help in that process. And then, while I appreciate greatly the service that that Mr. Tears offers to our city, I think that he has he has done a lot of good and a lot of service in our city, and I do think that he's knowledgeable in a lot of ways. I he has not demonstrated to me that he understands the importance and the value of relationship and communication in addressing the needs of our city. I I think that he has put out some things on social media that have been sometimes inaccurate, sometimes critical, which is wouldn't really be the problem. The problem was that I'm his representative and he never reached out to get my perspective or other perspectives that of other council members that may have had differing opinions from himself. And I think that that kind of communication is really important. And I also need to just briefly mention that last week, Mr. Tears made some comments that I was elected because I'm a woman. And I think that that's not only insulting to me, but it's also insulting to the people that voted for me. That there there's a lot of work that goes into running for council and a lot of effort and time and care that goes into into putting that I put forward to be a representative. And I I just I think that I needed to make a statement about that. I I think that communication is really important in building trust and and relationship and and I hope that moving forward that we can build have better building stones, Mr. Tears, and that 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 can can be more productive moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Smotherson.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. With that being said, I I just really find it necessary that I actually have to make or make give my opinion on this issue. And my and that opinion is that Tim Cusick was a did did a great job as a council member in the second ward, and there's no doubt about that. I appreciate his support with when we had the MSD issues and 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 all of that. But with that being said, there's no legacy in this seat. There's no sign on this seat that says Tim Cusick. It's so, again, he is, he was, he did a great job, but what I'm looking for is the best person that actually can represent the second ward. And I think that at least two of the candidates that I do know qualify for that as well. And but again, I just simply want to say I'm looking for the best person that has some experience and some knowledge about what's going on. I don't really care about their opinion as a private citizen. Means nothing to me. And that could even be and and those comments could even be contrary to what I think. But again, I don't have a problem with their private comments. Because I do think that all of them understand that once you take this seat, that you have a responsibility and and I and again, I think they all understand that. So I just really wanted to say that that there's no legacy here. There's no sign here. This is an open seat. So and the last thing that I will say is that, as I mentioned to Mr. Tears before, when I ran the second time, I did not at all have the hurdle that he had to overcome because our former council member in that in in Alita's seat actually picked Alita. And again, that a mountain I probably wouldn't have been able to overcome when I ran the second time. So again, I'm and I'll leave it at that. And that's my comment.
Any other comments? Ms. Klein.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up because in my nervousness, I forgot to say why I think that Dennis will be a good candidate. And and I don't think it's about him being Tim. I, you know, I appreciate those comments, Wayne. I don't think it's about him being Tim. I think that he's served the city and and his subdivision and the people in our community for a very long time, very faithfully. And he's demonstrated to me that he that he understands the importance of communication and and the other priorities that our city has. I know that that's only one component, but it's an important component. And and I think that for me, the service combined with with his connections, his ability to connect with people in our community is why I think that he will be a good council member.
Any other comments from members of the body? Hearing now, we have a motion and a second before us to fill the second ward council seat vacancy. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Smotherson.
Nay.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye. The motion has passed. We will coordinate with Mr. Fuller and the city clerk on a swearing in to all of the folks who took the time and effort to apply. We appreciate the service that you have given to your community and the time you put in making forth that effort. We also hope that you will stay engaged in ways to help make our community a better place. Thank you very much. We'll now move forward to citizen participation. I believe we have I saw a sheet of paper come forward, and I'm assuming it is from Ms. Ginsburg. So I'm assuming I know the topic probably as well. And if you can come forward to give your name and address, we will move forth.
Hi, my name is Erin Ginsburg. I live at four thirty West Point Court. Honorable Mayor, council members and city manager, in the last two weeks, U City TNR volunteers, TNR three cats from University City's first ward at no cost to U City taxpayers. Our community cat socialization efforts have been so successful. We've been able to place five friendly kitties into local rescues. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Ginsburg. Are there any other comments now from members of council? Hearing none. I only have two that I will be brief on. First off, I if anyone is free this Thursday evening, and I know you'd like to have a riveting presentation. The city manager, Mr. Rose, and I will be giving the state of the city address here in the chambers for the University City Historical Society at seven P M. I'm not sure if it's being livestreamed. This one may be one that you have. Oh, it is being livestreamed. You are handy, Raji. Thank you very much. We'd love to have you here in person, but you're also welcome to view from the comfort of your home. But we always appreciate the Historical Society giving us an opportunity to give our citizens an update on University City. And then finally, you see many of us up here have a button on for the celebration of one hundred years of parks in University City. That is a year-long celebration in University City because the first parks were created in nineteen twenty three by Mayor Flynn. And on April the fifteenth at two o'clock, we will have the opening celebration, if you will, of our parks in Ruth Park Woods. So we will you you will be hearing plenty getting plenty of information from us about a year-long celebration. You will be seeing highlights of different parks each month, not only on your calendar, but also on Facebook posts and on Instagram. And you will likely be seeing drone videos of families in the parks and the like. So we hope you can join us on April the fifteenth. And if you do have ideas to how we should celebrate, please do not hesitate to share them with Judy Prang, who has volunteered to put this effort together for us. With that, if there's nothing else to come before the body, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.